Tonight's meeting is to share information and receive feedback on the MBTA's 2024 proposed fair changes. My name is Ashley Armon. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Engagement, and I'm the moderator for tonight's meeting, and we really appreciate you joining us tonight. Lindsay Heffernan, Chief of Policy and Strategic Planning, and Stephen Povich, Senior Director of Fair Policy, will give a presentation, and we ask for all to please hold all comments until the end of the presentation. Before we get started, I'd like to go over a few meeting controls for everyone in the room who isn't familiar with Zoom. And I'll also let you know about our interpretation. So tonight, we have interpretation in ASL, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Mandarin. If you would like to view ASL interpretation at all times, we'd like you to keep your view settings in gallery mode. It should be the default setting, and you can change this by clicking the button that says "Gallery Mode" in the top right of your screen. This shows all presenters on the screen together, which ensures that you'll be able to see the interpreter as well as the speaker at all times. We also are offering interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Mandarin. You'll notice a globe icon at the bottom of your screen. You can click on the preferred language through the globe icon, and if you have any questions, you can reach out to our staff member who's entitled "Technical Support," and they'll be able to help you. I'd also like to let you know that all MBTA activities, including public meetings, are free of discrimination. The MBTA complies with all federal and state civil rights requirements preventing discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, limited English proficiency, and additional protected characteristics. We welcome the diversity from across our entire service area. If you have any questions or concerns, you can visit this link here on our website, which we'll also put in the chat, and reach out to the Office of Diversity and Civil Rights. We also have closed captioning for this meeting. You can click on "Closed Caption" to start viewing the closed captioning. If you have an issue navigating that, you can click and drag the closed captioning to move its position into the meeting window. And you can also adjust the caption size, so you can do that by clicking the upward arrow next to the "Start Video Sign" or "Stop Video Sign." Click the "Video Settings" and "Accessibility," and move the slider to adjust the caption size. Again, if you have any questions, you can reach out to tech support, and we'll be able to assist you. And just to reiterate, if you have any technical questions, we have the chat feature here. You can reach out to tech support. You can put the question right directly in the chat, and one of the staff members in our room will be able to assist you and attempt to troubleshoot your problem and get back to you. And with that, I'd like to transition this over to Lindsay Heffernan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually going to welcome my colleague Stephen Povich to kick us off to start what we hope is an engaging conversation at the end of this presentation about some proposed fair changes that the MBTA staff are offering and hope to implement over the coming months. Stephen, please, feel free.
Thanks, Lindsay, and good evening, everyone. As Ashley said, I'm the Senior Director of Fair Policy at the MBTA, and I'm happy to be with you to discuss proposed fair changes. Our proposal has two major portions. The first, and the headline of our proposal, is the expansion of Reduced Fares to Income Eligible Riders. This has been called a number of different things over the last decade, including a Means Tested or Low-Income Fair Program. But what it means is that we'll be applying our menu of Reduced Fair Prices, about 50% off, to riders with low income. In addition to this change, we're also making two other changes as part of a fair change package. The first is the elimination of change tickets when riders pay directly with cash onboard bus, green line, and matapan line vehicles, and replacing these with Charlie cards. And the second is the implementation on a permanent basis of the Holiday Pass and expansion of our $10 Weekend Pass on commuter rail. The fair change process at the MBTA takes three months and is a conversation between MBTA staff, the MBTA Board, and the public. The process began in January, where we presented this package of changes to the MBTA Board at their A&amp;F Subcommittee and Full Board Meetings. We also released an important RFP, which we'll speak to later in the program, that will help us manage a low-income or means-tested fair program. We've spent the month of February taking public comment and completing our Fair Equity Analysis, a federally mandated analysis of any fair change to ensure that it is fair to riders of color and riders with low income. Our public comment will run through the end of this month, just a couple more days, and we will return to the Board in March, seeking their approval. If approved by the Board, these changes will be implemented over the course of the spring and summer. Next slide, please. I'd like to start by providing a little bit of context on Reduced Fares, both here at the MBTA and nationally at some of our peer agencies. Today, the MBTA has a number of free and Reduced Fair Programs. Riders who are blind and children under 12 ride free, while students age 12 to 18 get passes through their schools or other methods to ride at half fairs. Low-income 18- to 25-year-olds, riders with disabilities, and seniors are also able to access Reduced Fair Prices through a variety of programs. There is not currently any Reduced Fair Program for riders with low income age 26 to 64. Our Reduced Fares typically provide about a 50% discount on tickets and passes across all of our modes and are available to riders in these categories. On the national front, six of the top 10 and 19 of the top 50 transit agencies around the country offer Reduced Fares to riders with low income. In the table, you can see a number of our peers, like New York, Los Angeles, and Washington, D.C., offer these discounts. And importantly, you can see that most peers offer a 50% discount and have an income threshold, in other words, the amount of money that you must make no more than at 200% of the federal poverty level. This is important, as we'll discuss further on the coming slides, because 200% of the federal poverty level is a cutoff used for many other government assistance programs. Next slide, please. So what are we proposing? For a new income-eligible Reduced Fair Program, we're proposing that we expand our Reduced Fares to riders with low income under 200% of that federal poverty level. Riders who are enrolled in SNAP and certain mass health programs will be eligible for Reduced Fares through our new application process. And alongside this new eligibility for Reduced Fares, we'll be extending Reduced Fares to riders who are income-eligible and who are seniors on the ride, our Paratransit Service, which is the first expansion of a Reduced Fair Program of the MBTA to incorporate Paratransit. Next slide, and I'll pass it over to Lindsay to take us through the next portion of our presentation.
Good evening. And again, my name is Lindsay Heffernan. I'm the Chief of Policy and Strategic Planning. So I want to talk about how we're thinking about eligibility and determining income levels or thresholds for our riders. We are looking at using an eligibility threshold of 200% of the federal poverty level set by the federal government, sometimes referred to as FPL. 200% of FPL equates to about $29,000 for a single individual, and about $60,000 for a household of four. Riders will, however, not come to the MBTA with W2s or Pay Stubbs to show us that that is their income level. They will instead demonstrate their eligibility via enrollment in other state- and federal-based income eligibility programs. That enrollment will last for one year after approval, and riders will then have to reapply annually. When we launched this program, our partnerships with Mass Health and DTA have included the following seven different programs, for which one would say, if you're in that program, you are then eligible for Reduced Fares at the MBTA. That includes DTA-run programs, Department of Transitional Assistance, which, one of the, the first one is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, known as SNAP, Transitional Assistance for Families and Dependent Children, TAFDC, Emergency Aid to Elderly and Elderly Disabled and Children, EAEDC, and then four different mass health programs: Care Plus, Family Assistance, Mass Health Limited, and Mass Health Standard. So what is the rider experience going to be like, and what kind of savings can riders expect? Riders who are enrolled in this program will be mailed a Charlie card that will be valid for approximately half-price fares on all of our modes and all of our passes and programs. When loaded with stored value, tapping the card at a fare gate or a fare box on a, on a bus or the green line will deduct approximately half-price of our full fares. The card will look similar to this image on the screen. And when that card is used at a fare vending machine, riders would see discounted passes and prices on all of our modes. For ride users, standard trips would be 50% off. That means they will come down to $1.70 from $3.35 for our ADA trips. So for the average rider, of somebody who uses the MBTA regularly, particularly the bus and subway system, who buys a monthly pass, the monthly pass has a steeper discount in our Reduced Fares. It's, it's more than 50% off. That price would drop from $90 for a current monthly pass down to $30 and result in rider savings of $720 annually. As we mentioned, we're expanding this program to all of our modes. And so commuter rail rider, who would be a potentially Zone 5 commuter rail rider, would see a decrease in their one-way ticket from $7, excuse me, $9.75 to $4.75. That monthly pass price decrease then is $159 for that rider, and they'd see just shy of $2,000 of annual savings. So the MBTA is excited to offer this program to our riders and hope that they see some substantial savings for riders with lower income. We can go to the, thank you. So just to give an example, we have hosted public meetings throughout our service area over the last few, probably three to three weeks. And if you were to drive, or you were to use the MBTA from our, our headquarters, which is in, by the Boston Common, and try to get to any of these locations, the current price of the tea is shown in the gray column, and that lime-green column shows what that new price is. So when we were hosting a meeting in Lowell, that trip would have, today is $10.50 for a rider in the future in our Reduced Fair Program that would drop down to $5.25. Again, we have another Brockton example here, or Worcester on commuter rail, where those price savings are more than 50% off. And then are those who are in our core part of our network, the bus and subway in Dorchester and Roxbury, subway fare drops from, in Dorchester, from $2.40 down to $1.10. And in Roxbury, our bus fare drops from $1.70 down to $0.85 per the trip. Can go to the next slide. I'd like to spend a minute talking about the ride and how this program is going to impact our paratransit customers. This expansion of Reduced Fares will include our income-eligible riders for the first time and be the first Reduced Fair Program on the ride. It's important to note that also as part of this change, senior ride users will also be eligible for half-price fares on the ride. Currently, the ride fares for an ADA trip are $3.35, which are set, they're federally capped, at two times the full fare price of an equivalent trip. And now eligible riders will be, will, will pay only $1.70 for their ADA trips. The expansion, oh, we can go back one minute, thanks. The expansion of Reduced Fares will launch only on ADA trips. And we continue as a staff to look at the possibility of, in the future, expanding that to our premium trips, which take our customers farther outside of our service area or are booked within less than 24 hours' notice, and our Flex Fares, which are our partnership with the transportation network companies. And so this current proposal is only to offer the Reduced Fares on the ADA trips. Thank you. You can go to the next slide. So I want to talk about the application process. It's four steps, and we believe it will take less than five minutes to complete. We've spent a lot of time to try to make this easy and simple for our riders. The first step will be an identity check, making sure that you are who you say you are. And we will do that through a partnership with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, using either a driver's license, a mass ID, a learner's permit, or a liquor card number. And you can see on the side of your screen here just a few number of fields that people have to fill out. We make sure people know where to find that number on their state-issued ID. And the eligibility check is issued through a consent. It's that, that text at the bottom of the image is an agreement with the people who select "Next" to allow us to do a backend check, to make sure that individuals are enrolled in one of those programs that we mentioned. It will check both the Department of Transitional Assistance benefits and the Mass Health benefits to see if that applicant is eligible based on their income. What's lovely about this program is it offers instant approval if you're eligible. Riders will know immediately. And then the next step is we'll ask, how do you want to get your card? Do you want us to mail it to you, or do you want to pick it up and give us a location where you need to go pick it up? The application is available in multiple languages, and the application is accessible to screen readers. I would also note that the MBTA has seen a lot of success with moving our applications for other Reduced Fair Programs, including our Disabled Riders Program, the TAP Program, and seniors to online methodologies, particularly during COVID. That was important, and so we've gotten better, really better at this, and we are excited to offer this expansion as a way to enroll riders and enroll them quickly and without a lot of difficulty. But we also know that not every rider is going to be able to use an online portal very easily. And so for that, we are looking right now for community-based partners to support us, so that if a rider has difficulty using technology or difficulty with the, another language that we're not offering, or just frankly needs more support, where are they going to go? And we know that's important, so, and the MBTA service area is very large, in 171 communities. We have released a request for proposal. It's a way for the state government to buy services, also known as an RFP, for a community partner to support the application process and to support the program as a whole. So those partners are being asked to do three different things. First, to provide in-person support for riders who would prefer to apply in person. Second would be to support our back-office verification, such that a rider could upload documentation. Let's say they, they think they're enrolled in one of those programs, but for some reason, the match isn't working well, the date of birth is wrong in a, in a record, or who knows what, that we would want our partners to help us with some of the verification in those cases. And that we are interested in their support in helping us to do marketing and engagement. It's going to take time and effort to get people to know about this program and then enroll. And so we want community-based and frankly trusted partners to help us, whether it's at summer parades or going to other community events and making sure we have tables and the availability to encourage people and then support them to enroll in this new program. So lastly, I want to talk about some of that outreach and marketing. The MBTA is very much interested in, and has been spending a lot of time thinking about how to engage our riders who we think would be eligible for this program. We think there's nearly 60,000 of them in our service area and to get them to apply. And so we know that that target audience is income-eligible people enrolled in one of those programs who are between the ages of 26 and 64. And we then have to think about all the different ways that we have. Some of those are the responsibility of the MBTA. We have a lot of physical assets. We have screens in our stations, and we can hang up signage in our buses and subways and let people know. We can use our website, certainly, to let people know. Many people come to the MBTA to plan their trips, and so we can grab them there at that moment. We can also use our social media channels. The MBTA has multiple different social media channels to take advantage of. We're also creating a toolkit for partner outreach. And so whether that's at community health centers or other places and other partners who we think are engaging with potential riders to make sure that they can get the word out to us about, the word out about this program to our riders. And then finally, we are looking, as I said, to collaborate with all of our partners, partners through Health and Human Services, Mass Health, other case managers, community-based programs, some of our partner networks. We already have strong partnerships with individuals in the advocates from representing individuals with disabilities to the Youth Pass Program. And so we have a lot of partnerships we can leverage in order to get the word out. At this point, I'm going to hand it back to Stephen to talk about the impact to our riders.
Thanks, Lindsay. So one question many people ask is, how many people might enroll in this program? And how many trips will those folks take with the new Reduced Fares? We think that on our fixed route system, that's bus, subway, commuter rail, and ferry, that around 62,000 riders will take around 8 million trips annually by fiscal year 2029. The chart below demonstrates our belief that there will be a rate, that not every rider will enroll on day one, but over the course of the first five years of the program, enrollment and the corresponding rides will grow together. On our Paratransit Service, we think around 28,000 of our riders will enroll, generating around 185,000 additional trips. Next slide, please. And in terms of costs, the program costs include fair revenue loss. When we charge half as much, we generate less fair revenue. Operating costs, to meet the increased demand for our services, we may have to run some more service, particularly on paratransit. And administrative costs, the cost to manage the online application, work with our community partners, et cetera. Fair revenue loss grows from around $8 million in the first year to around $35 million in year five. Operating costs grow from around $13 million to around $20 million. Notably, the operating costs are most substantial on our Paratransit Service, where the cost structure is a lot more variable, because every ride is matched to a driver. And finally, in terms of administrative costs, we expect about $3 million annually. In total, we anticipate the growth of costs for this program to run from $25 million in the first year to a steady state of around $50 to $60 million. Now, I'd like to talk about a couple other changes that I highlighted at the beginning, and this concludes our discussion for now until the open questions on low-income fares. The first change is the replacement of change tickets with Charlie cards. Today, when you board a bus or green line or matapan line vehicle and pay directly with cash and overpay by more than 50 cents, the machine prints out a small Charlie ticket that has stored value for the overpayment amount. So let's say you put a $5 bill in a bus fare box. $3.30 is returned to you as stored value on a change ticket. This functionality is going away due to obsolescence of certain elements of our fare collection technology. It's important to note that no other transit agency uses this approach. And so we're transitioning riders to instead load cash onto Charlie cards to retain that value on a Charlie card rather than getting a change ticket. Riders can use the fare box to tap a Charlie card and insert cash to get that money loaded onto the card. This change is going into effect on March 1st, in just a couple days, on a pilot basis, and will become permanent upon the Board's vote. The second change is the expansion of our commuter rail weekend pass to include, to include federal holidays. We have an ongoing pilot to test this idea of allowing riders, when there's a three-day weekend, for example, MLK Weekend or President's Day Weekend, to ride Saturday, Sunday, and Monday for the flat $10 weekend rate. So far, we've seen great success from this pilot. Riders have liked it. It's increased our ridership, and it's increased our revenue, so a real win-win. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? We can go to the next slide. First, I want to share the results of our draft equity analysis. The equity analysis is a federally required piece of work that ensures the change doesn't have a disparate impact on riders of color or a disproportionate burden on riders with low income. So what does that mean? That means that we have to make sure, that makes sure that every fare increase or fare decrease is not unfairly burdensome on riders of color or low-income riders, meaning we don't increase fares more for those categories than other riders or decrease them less for those categories than for other riders. In the table in the middle of the slide, you can see these calculations. The disparate impact ratio for riders of color is 1.41x, which means that riders of color are seeing a 1.4x larger decrease in fares than all riders. Likewise, in the bottom row, low-income riders are seeing a decrease in fares of 1.6x the, the decrease in fares for all riders. Most importantly, these pass are internal thresholds for an equity analysis, and so we expect to have no issue with this moving forward. I'll pass it back to Lindsay to summarize our next steps.
Sure. As Stephen mentioned, we have been at this process for a while now. We're about halfway through this slide. Our public comment closes in a couple of days. We will continue to, of course, take comments from the public, but we will be using that date to start to summarize all of the public comments to make sure that we share them on our website, so you can see all that we've heard from these eight different public meetings and also comments we've received via email and in other such forums. We will then use all that feedback in order to make any revisions to the proposal that we first made to our Board. We expect that we will go back to our Board on March 28th, seeking a Board vote to make these fair changes. The changes themselves won't launch until a few months later. As Stephen noted, we are piloting the change ticket starting March 1st. The low-income fare program will take many more months to implement, and, and we would hope that we'll be there over the summertime. We have hosted, this meeting was, this slide was really important when we had many more meetings, public meetings to hold. We are near the end of this, and our last public meeting, which is a virtual one. I want to thank many staff who are on this call, who've helped us and helped us, whether interpreters or the MBTA staff, in order to engage with the public in all of these different locations and places. And at this point in time, I think, Ashley, I'm going to hand it back to you to help moderate some of the questions that we have.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Lindsay, and thank you, Stephen, for presenting as well, both Lindsay and Stephen. We're now opening it up to the Q&amp;A section. If you'd like to share a comment or ask a question, we ask that you use a chat feature at the bottom of your screen to submit your type question or comment. And we'd like to note that we'll alternate between reading questions and comments already submitted and recognizing those who want to pose a question verbally. We ask that you speak slowly so that our interpreters are able to grasp the content that you're sharing, but also so that we can hear from as many people as possible. To make a comment, you must virtually raise your hand. And to do this on the computer, you can press Alt-Y or click on the "Raise Hand" button under the "Participants" tab at the bottom center of your screen. On a mobile device, you can tap the "Raise Hand" button in the bottom center of your screen. And on the phone, you can dial *9. Once you raise your hand, you'll be added to a queue with others, and we'll unmute you and mute you where fit. Before we open up the comment and question segment to the public, we'd like to invite any elected officials in attendance or their staff to ask any questions or make comments. And we ask that you use that "Raise Hand" feature in case you have any questions. You know, a question came into the chat about that. At this time, we're opening up the segment to the public. At this time, we're opening up the segment to the public. If there are no elected officials or staff that are speaking or raising their hands at this time, I don't see any, but I'll let there be a couple more seconds. Okay, great. We're now opening it up to the public. At this time, we'll start off with some of the questions that were sent in to us via Zoom registration first. Then I'll look into the chat and get anyone that's muted and unmuted as well. So the questions have started off on Zoom. The first question is, will the current ride fares be changed as well?
Sure, I can take that. And if we could maybe spotlight Stephen, he and I will tag team some of these questions. So as we mentioned, ride fares for individuals with low income will drop by half price. That is for individuals between up to age 64. At the time they are 65, they will then be eligible for a senior, our senior program. And this proposal means that senior, that senior pass or senior program, the individuals who are eligible for the senior program will be able to use that eligibility on the ride. Today, that is not true. Seniors do not receive a discount on the ride, even though they do receive a discount on our fixed route system. So ride fares are changed by dropping them for those who are eligible. You're still muted, Ashley. You haven't done enough of these meetings.
Our next question is, why has my son not received a Ride Flex account after more than 10 days post-application?
I think we're happy to kind of try to follow up with that individual if they registered and make sure that that gets to the ride administrators. I believe, Ashley, we have their email, so we can definitely follow up and make sure if there's an issue that they're having individually that we can have our team address it.
Yeah, Judy, we'll get back to you on that question. Our next response is actually a comment. And it says, no fee increase for seniors. So thank you for your comment.
We agree too, where they're not increasing fees. This whole proposal is dropping fees and costs.
Okay, and then our next question is, can we just make the T free instead of means testing it? If the city of Boston raised taxes on folks making 150K plus, we could probably pay for it easily. I'm one of those people and would like to pay more taxes to useful public services instead of cops.
So the T's fares currently, we budget, we are budgeting to receive about $420 million on fares. Before COVID, that number was close to 700 million. So the T is not currently in a position with our operating budget to be able to absorb all of that. I appreciate that we have an individual on this call who is willing to have their taxes raised, but I don't think everybody is as of yet. I'd also note that the T operates in 171 communities. And so while we think of our service as a Boston-based service for a lot of reasons, there are many, many, nearly, nearly half of the Commonwealth is served by the MBTA. And so we probably need a more global solution to get there. The MBTA staff thinks that low-income fares or reduced fares for riders with low income are a really sensible and pragmatic way for us to address fare affordability without causing such, really an unsustainable operating loss at this point in time. Stephen, do you want to add anything that I missed to that?
No, I think that was a good summary. Thank you.
Thank you. So then we had two more questions about the fare being free, which I think Lindsay's response answered that. Our next question is, where can I locate the RFP? And we sent the link in the chat. Let us know if you have any questions in the chat if you can't find it. Our next question is, is it possible for the MBTA to automatically verify continued, automatically verify continued eligibility without the rider having to go through the system again?
Sure, I can take that question. That's a good question and it's something that we're looking at. We think it's likely to be technically feasible with our agreements and our integrations with Health and Human Services and the Registry of Motor Vehicles that Lindsay mentioned in the online application. We're deciding currently as part of our launch plan whether it makes sense programmatically for our relationship with our riders to have continuous automatic re-enrollment or if it's better to have a touch point on an annual basis with our riders.
Can I note one additional comment there, Ashley, that I think is important? Some of the programs that we're building off on have various ways in which they have fraud prevention checks. And so they'll send and ask individuals to affirm that they continue to be eligible for programs. So somebody could be eligible on one day and not eligible another day. The MBTA, if you are eligible on the day that you apply, you get that service, you get this benefit for the next year. Even if over the course of that year, your income goes up, you obtain a new job, something happens in your life, you'll continue that benefit. And after a year, we're going to ask you to, again, fill out those four questions and confirm you're still eligible going forward. But we hope to not see as much churn in our system the way that some other programs have been designed for individuals of low income.
Thank you both. We have a question, the Reduced Fare program is very exciting. Is WIC enrollment not considered for eligibility?
So we are starting with some of the programs that, based on our research, would capture the largest percentage of our riders and wanted something ready to launch and be launch-eligible. There are other income-based programs that are available, free and reduced lunch programs, Fuel Assistance, WIC, that over the, over time, the MBTA would hope we could develop some partnerships to potentially expand to as well. But at launch, we're going to start with the programs through DTA and Mass Health while we continue to explore those. But we're not for closing the possibility for the future. So thank you for suggesting another avenue for us to look at.
And the last question we have that was submitted and through Zoom registration before I go to the chat and get the raised hand is, will the Youth Pass be gone as a result of this low fare program?
Sure, it's a great question. Our intention is to make our Reduced Fare programs as streamlined, simple and easy to access as possible. And so we envision over the long term, including Youth Pass participants today in our new income-eligible, in our new income-eligible Reduced Fare program. So that means the short answer is yes, the longer answer is not yet. And we'll be coming up with more information on when we plan to make that change going forward. I'd also like to comment on one other comment that's in the chat about ages. I noticed a comment saying that the program should extend to riders who are 65 and older. I want to clarify one point here. All riders of all incomes, 65 and older, today at the MBTA are already eligible for Reduced Fares for our senior program. And so the idea of this program is it is only for riders who aren't eligible for the senior program because that program is available to anyone regardless of income. And eligibility for that program lasts eight years, literally just how long the card lasts till you need a new one. So there's really no need for us to expand this program for riders over 65, given the existing program for those riders.
Thank you for that, Stephen. I'm now going into the Q and A part with the raised hand in the chat. I see one raised hand and that's Ann. So Ann, I'm going to ask you to unmute and lower your hand and you can begin speaking. Ann, are you able to unmute?
I'm sorry, I thought you did it. Okay. I said, this, this program is terrific. It relies on means testing, which means that people need to prove that they need this service. I, I would like to ask if the MBTA has looked into, to me, it seems unfair that low-income people need to prove that they need this service, yet seniors do not. And I will tell you the story of my father years ago, standing on the, my father was a working schmo, standing on the platform with a neighbor. My father paying full fare when he was 65 and, and his neighbor at age 65 using a Reduced Senior Pass to get half price and she made two or three times more than he did. Why don't we require the seniors to pass an eligibility threshold? We're making low-income people do it and students do it. And I think it's only fair to make seniors do it. It just, if we're looking for equity, we should be requiring means testing for all people getting reduced rates.
Can I start that, Ashley? And then I'm going to let Stephen add some more detail. I really appreciate where you're, where you're coming from there. And it is, it could strike some folks as potentially unfair. And that's sort of what I, what I hear in your response. The reality for the MBTA is that federal law requires that we offer half-price fares to seniors as, as part of our FTAs, the Federal Transit Administration oversight of the MBTA and all rapid transit and transit providers in, in the country. It does say that we only have to provide those in the off-peak hours. That is logistically so complex for us and requires a level of technological understanding of whether someone's operating in the peak or driving in the, riding the peak or not riding in peak of service, think of the morning and the evening rushes. The MBTA, from the beginning of the, the senior program, has just made half prices and it actually dictates exactly what that fare should, should be. And so we're, we're complying with federal law when it comes to seniors. That's also part of individuals who receive Medicaid. Am I correct about that part, Stephen? If you want to add a little more detail there, please, I'll hand it over to you.
No, nothing to add. It's, it's medic, it's, I believe it's actually medic, yeah, it's Medicaid, Medicare, excuse me, and, and seniors, which is somewhat redundant.
Well, with the new AFC 2, is there a way to, it seems like there would be a way to, you know, restrict it to off-peak.
Potentially, you're not incorrect. I will note some practical reality that the T has of taking away a benefit that we have been offering for decades. And so I, I'm not suggesting that you're wrong, that that may make sense. I don't know if it will be feasible for us. But yes, I understand entirely where you're coming from. There is some potential in the future that we, we could rethink how we offer those benefits.
Keep it on the table. I think it's just fair.
Thank you for your comment. Very much noted.
We have a question that was sent to me in DM. I have a Tap Charlie card. Would I need to send any documents like pay stubs, Mass Health card, Medicare, red, white, and blue card, Mass ID, and all the above to the MBTA? I want to test a new pilot. I have a caseworker that I'd love to work with on this.
So I would say two things in answer to this question. First, the benefits that a rider has for her, which is for riders with disabilities, are the same benefits that riders in our new income-eligible Reduced Fare program will find. That is the same menu of tickets and passes at about 50% off. So if you're already enrolled in Tap, it's probably your best option to just stay enrolled in Tap. Certainly, if your circumstances change and you'd like to enroll in this program instead, we welcome that. In terms of how a rider will apply, in most cases, a rider will apply via an online application that automatically verifies their identity via an integration with the Registry of Motor Vehicles and their eligibility via an integration with Mass Health, which you mentioned in the question, and the Department of Transitional Assistance. Only if those automatic verification steps don't work for some reason, would we ask a rider to upload or bring in-person documentation, like an acceptance letter to one of those programs. So the answer to your question is, I'd probably stick with Tap and you probably won't have to send in those documents, even if you want to be in this program.
Thank you for that. We have another question that also came in in two different forms, which is, my son is eligible, my son is 11. Is he eligible for a student Charlie card when he turns 12, even though he doesn't go to a local school?
Good question. First, folks should check in with their school, although it sounds like this rider or this parent has and their school does not dissipate in our student program. We welcome more schools to our student program, so would love to get your school enrolled if they are not yet. In the case where your school is not enrolled in the Student Pass program and you'd like to participate, riders in the 12 to 18 age category can apply to Youth Pass to get their same benefits. More information can be found at MBTA.com under Reduced Fares.
I've shared those links as well in the chat. And let me know if you can't access them and I'll be sure to send it to you in another way. We have another question, which is, if someone already has a charge card and is eligible, can they convert it to a low-income Charlie card? Or can they transfer the balance to their new low-income Charlie card they get in the mail?
Good question. The card itself cannot become a low-income fare Charlie card. However, we can transfer the balance from one card to another. And we'll be able to provide more information about that process once we launch the program.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions or comments in the chat. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to say verbally? Don't see any raised hands.
It looks like maybe there's one question about whether folks can use change tickets after March 1st from John. I think the, I believe the question is if you've received a change ticket, you know, today, two weeks from now, when change tickets are no longer issued, can you still use that change ticket? And the answer to that question is yes. We will continue to accept those change tickets going forward. I'd note that those tickets have, for some time now, had a six-month expiration. So we would expect that beginning on March 1st, folks would only have them for another six months. You can also convert that value onto Charlie cards at our Charlie Card Store.
Jimmy, I see that you're direct messaging me. Can you send the question that you would like me to ask Lindsay as well? I don't see the question. Or did you want me to repeat the same question? Yes, so what we will do offline, Jimmy, is we can check for you and we'll connect you with our colleagues at the Mobility Center to assist with that. Okay, I'll gather your email from the registration and I'll reach back out to you on that question. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Folks, please raise your hand and I'm happy to unmute you. So Jimmy, I think we already answered that, but I'm happy to. So Jimmy, I think we already answered that, but I'm happy to elevate that again to folks, um, in case you may have missed the response. So, um, the question is about the documents again. What documents are needed? I have a Tap card. Would I need to send any documents like pay stub, et cetera, Medicare, Mass Health card?
So if you have a Tap card, you already get reduced fare benefits on the fixed route system. Tap cards generally last longer than a year, depending on your medical eligibility. So this program doesn't add any extra benefit on top of that. Um, Stephen had an earlier graphic where he showed sort of by age who is out, who currently gets reduced fares, and Tap is not age-restricted. It's just based on your, um, your medical, um, ability to access the system. And so, uh, there isn't a good reason that we can think of that you would want to be in this program since you already get the same reduced fare benefits. Um, but again, the T for others who are applying is not looking to receive your pay stubs or your W twos or any of those things, but are looking to see if you're eligible for other, um, entitlement programs, uh, to therefore make you automatically entitled, uh, to this program with that, with that check that we do on the backend with Health and Human Services.
Thank you for that, Lindsay, and we received an affirmation. And thank you to everyone working on this. We're very excited about this program with some hearts in between. So thank you for that affirmation. We appreciate it. And we received another affirmation. Thanks so much for your work to push the reduced fare program forward. Thank you for making an automated verification process with other programs. Hopefully, other programs will follow your example in the future. With feel-good hearts and pluses.
The T staff will take all of your feel-good hearts and pluses. Thank you, everybody.
Any other questions or comments? We can end early if there are any going ones, going twice. Thanks for expanding the commuter weekend pass program. Okay. Um, thank you, everyone, for your time. We really appreciate you joining us. And feel free to contact us if you have any questions through publicengagement@MBTA.com. And we look forward to talking to you again. Bye, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.